Twenty twenty-three, we have a roll call, please.
Roll call, Mylan. Mylan.
You can do it.
Okay, I'll come back. Bob, if you could unmute. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez. Brenneman.
Here.
Haley.
Hmm.
Island. Mylan. Okay, um.
Can we let the record reflect that he's he's joined virtually?
He well, he's not participating yet, but you do have a quorum.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So.
Up second.
Yeah, you can see.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, Steve.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Haley.
All right.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Um, I think, are we gonna move the?
If you want to, I mean, we did take the one procedure off.
Oh, why don't you make a motion? Right. Whoa, I'm sorry. We gotta go back to that agenda. I apologize.
You can just move to amend it now, but it's.
Okay, I was gonna move to amend tonight's agenda to take the board procedures policy and move it to another work session, a subsequent work session where we have the entirety of the board here.
Does Jeff move to approve amended agenda?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you. So does anybody have any, um, meetings, U G meetings, or anything to report on? Any board member?
Next Monday is our Public Works and Safety Committee meeting, so I'll have something after after that. Nothing tonight.
Oh, thank you. Jeff, you have anything?
I don't have any meetings.
There, Haley.
No.
Nothing, okay.
I'll wait till.
Okay, that sounds great. Well, without further ado, this brings us to the twenty twenty-four budget update. Staffing proposal.
I miss you taking the lead.
Yes.
Set here.
Sure. Actually, gonna participate.
Okay. You have handouts.
Uh, we don't just the PowerPoint.
I would I would ask for future subsequent meetings, work sessions especially, to have handouts. I don't always print mine out, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, um, thank you, Board. I'm Dennis Dumovich, Director of H R. We have with us Ashley Culp. She's our H R manager as well. So we're gonna go through, if we could go to the next slide, please. The the agenda for tonight is really made mainly two subject areas, one being benchmarking. So we'll we'll compare our staffing numbers to some a benchmark study that was done in twenty twenty-two. And then additionally, we're gonna cover our current staffing numbers internally um, and what we've proposed for twenty twenty-four as well. So we'll do some comparisons there and show some history as well. So if we we could go to twenty twenty-two benchmark survey results. And then the next slide is the participants. So we, uh, in in the benchmark survey, we included six utilities. Very, as similar as possible to our organization, um, City Utilities of Springfield, Independence Power and Light, Rochester Public Utilities, and on the next page, Lansing Board of Water and Light out of Lansing, Michigan, and Lincoln Electric System out of Lincoln, Nebraska, and then the the B P U. Um, one thing of note, you know, while comparisons aren't perfect, um, they do represent Midwest utilities have both water and power um, divisions, their municipal utilities, and they are represented by unions. One of the things of note is, and and that first grouping of the first three, Independence Power and Rochester are significantly smaller than us. But nonetheless, um, they have a number of those factors.
And I should add to that. So I wouldn't say that they're significantly smaller. I would say that both of those utilities lean on their city support way more than the other utility. So, uh, like their H R department, some accounting department, some of their I T services. Maybe how's that their local city office or and then they provide service back. So I tried, we tried to go back and and ask the question, how much are you, how much city staff are you allocating for utility? And that information just didn't come in in time. So so that's not included here, but if it was, certainly change some of the comparison and bring it closer to B P U because they have to be able to maintain the same stuff. They have to have, they have to have I T, they have to have they have to have all the other services for their electric and water utilities. It's just structural difference.
So at this point, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Ashley. Ashley is the person who actually, um, really gathered a great deal of the benchmark data.
Ashley.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, Lincoln does not have a water division, right?
They have a department of water.
Yeah.
The utility is separate from the city.
Does Springfield, Missouri, uh, news power?
That's yeah.
Okay, I noticed that there are lines, or miles of lines are quite similar, but the number of accounts they have is larger.
Yeah, so we have.
Yeah, and they, but they produce.
They do.
Two, okay.
Yeah.
Let's move to the next slide. So, um, doing the first comparable, the the twenty-two full-time positions. Um, as you can see, as we go through the slides, we have the average in the front, and then B P U would be highlighted with the green box, so just stick it out. So full-time positions is going to be defined. This is actually represents the budgeted positions for each utility. So the average is four sixty-four, and we are right in the middle at five sixty-three, comparing that to the average. Let's go ahead and move on to the next slide. The next is, um, we are looking at percentages. So a twenty-two administrative support staff here at B P U, this represents, um, the divisions, accounting and finance, corporate compliance, customer service, the G M's office, human resources and technology. And so the average is about thirty-seven percent, and we are, um, functioning at twenty-eight percent.
Does that include, um, contract workers?
No, this is just, uh, this is, yeah, this is budgeted.
Is it gonna be the same for them? And do we know, and do we know what their percentages of contract workers are?
When it comes to that survey, a number of them, uh, most, I would say, most of them outside did not report their contractors. We did ask it in the survey.
Okay.
It just did not come back.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, this is a survey we sent out, asked them to do.
Yes.
And and is this in, I mean, these are all public entities, right?
Mm-hmm.
So all this information is out there publicly somewhere, right?
Yeah, but we asked a member of their staff to fill it out for us, so we did not complete the survey. It was done by a employee at that utility.
So. So prior to twenty twenty-two, we did hire, sure. Reported, asking about funding surveys, and he brought it back. And then, I think that was twenty twenty, maybe, and so then twenty twenty-two, went back to see what's changed. That was just last year, so this is, this year looking at last year is not. And, uh, Ashley.
Yeah, we put a survey together and it was consistent. All right. Let's go ahead and move to the next staff. The next slide is representing the electric staff for the utility. Um, this is the production operations and supply divisions. Um, it's cut average is about fifty percent, and B P U is coming in at fifty-three percent. Let's go ahead and move to the next slide. This is the water. Um, so average is about fifteen percent, and, um, B P U is coming in at nineteen percent. And this is strictly just the water division numbers. All right, so go ahead and move to the customers per employee. So for this, this represents the water and electric customers total, and we were consistent throughout all of the customers. And so it's averaged by the budget position. So average is about two seventy-nine, and we're coming in at two hundred and ten customers per employee.
Per budgeted position, so five sixty-three, and we all know we don't sit at five sixty-three today, right?
No, that's our.
Five, yeah.
Yeah, we'll we'll cover those numbers here, but later.
So we did ask. Everybody else, they'll make it so. And there are, there's been a number of other utilities that didn't. We didn't have enough complete information to be able to put that into our site of patients, such as sketchy.
And we're looking at these numbers on a staffing standpoint of what we're gonna put in the budget, knowing that we have positions that are difficult to fill.
And and contractor numbers flex. I mean, that's the whole point of having contractors is you're gonna be able to flex those throughout the year um, to whatever your needs are. That's why these organizations typically don't give us a number because it's a moving target.
Great. So now we're going to break, we're breaking it down here on this slide, um, transmission distribution line miles per employee. Um, B P U comes in, there's five point oh-six miles per each employee, with the average being four point three-nine. And as you can see, it's very comparable here. Um, so then we have one person that's slightly different, so. Yeah, this is electric. And then here's the water. Next slide is gonna be over the water pipe miles per employee. And so.
That person.
Uh-huh. You're fine.
So the one that, the outlier here, the two point eight-nine, that's Springfield, right?
Yeah. Yes.
How do they manage that? What are they doing? Right.
So. Well, this is a system, actually, they have less distributed U N D lines than we do, than we do, and they have more staff, okay, so. Uh, and I need to pick up on that too, so.
Yeah. And customers.
For them, to their board.
Yeah, ours is a good number.
Okay, sorry.
And then the next slide will be over the water pipe. Oh, go ahead and go back to the water. Um, it's one point seven-two miles per, the average is two point four-four, so we're coming in right in the middle on that one.
Well, and I wanna make a point about that.
I have to.
Or, you know, when you look at, like, independents, okay, so they have their, uh, city system, but they provide retail service too. They also have a lot of wholesale customers out there too, that I'm not sure, and I don't know if we need to go back and break that down as to how much support or A lines, so type of version or not, but there are some small differences here.
Well, this number of employee, uh, miles per employee, are the employee base calculating the ones that work at the Nierman Water Treatment Plant as well?
This is actually doing the whole utility, so it's the water.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
That budgeted employees.
Over all employees.
Yes.
Okay, same way on the electric.
Yes.
Okay.
And the customers too.
That includes, uh, administrative and.
Yes, it's a total. So it's the the number at the first slide that we showed you when we started talking about percentage or benchmarking data.
Okay, thank you.
Because they, you know, the other way to provide services.
Yeah.
Retired electric system, our water.
I just wanna be able to grasp it.
Right. And then, um, let's move to the next slide.
Yeah, so when when you look at the the benchmarking overall, B P U is very, very competitive. You know, we're leading in a number of categories at the median at most. Um, and, you know, there there might be a category too where we have an anomaly that we're not extremely competitive, but for the most part, we are very, uh, competitive and we we fit very well in the study. The other point to note is, you'll see this in our, um, the the staffing summaries that we provide you next. We're consistently becoming more efficient, um, with our staffing. So when you look five years ago, we had seventy more employees than what we have today. We're getting more and more efficient, so that's that's great. Again, just the caveat, comparisons are not perfect. These are the best that we could find that were willing to participate. We asked a few others to participate that didn't have the time to be able to put the effort into to get gathering these numbers.
You know, FOIA is your friend over there, H R.
Who?
Freedom of information.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But, you know, we we feel pretty, pretty good that these were good comparators. And, um, you know, there is detail that we asked for that you can't really necessarily gather publicly unless you ask questions. So um, you know, we feel pretty, pretty good about the benchmarking.
I do wanna make one other statement too. So a number of us have established good working relationship with these other utilities at different level. I know all the G M's here. Steve, Jeremy knows a lot about their staff, we back in business, same utilities. Or rational plans against theirs. So that just, that has built up the trust value, uh, between us and them when it comes to us, them sharing information with us, and then what we stated up front. Participate in this. I mean, this is not only gonna help us, but if you want to uh, certainly use back to, certainly. They were all the champions. Actually, I think we're all in the in the municipal space, I think, a lot of time, just for our Midwest region, we're we're working closely together. Not directly competing with one another. So I think that's, that's one thing that, uh, is still that we have.
All right, let's move on to B P U staffing if we go to the next slide. This is really a general look at total, uh, proposed staffing in our our history of staffing. So when you, when you go back five years and you look at twenty eighteen, we had seven, six hundred and twenty-seven budgeted positions. Now we're down to proposing five hundred and fifty-six. It's a reduction of seventy-one positions, and you can see pretty consistently that we've eliminated roles, um, every year, and we continue to try to become more efficient.
Biggest than our production.
Yep. So you you have a department-by-department breakdown as well that you can study at your leisure. When, let's go to the next slide. Um, well, we talk, we talk about approved positions versus actual headcount. Rose, this is what you were talking about earlier, that we don't have all our positions filled. When you look at the history, you know, twenty seventeen, we had ninety-seven vacancies, and twenty twenty, ninety, ninety-five, and twenty twenty-one, now we're down to seventy-two vacant positions. And so we're getting better and better about, uh, requiring people, uh, to be more efficient with their budgets. Um, we are filling positions at a better rate than we ever have in the past, and you'll see that here in a little bit as well. So we've got um, seventy-two vacant positions, but we're in the process of recruiting for at least
twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, um, positions right now. So we're continuously recruiting for, uh, for jobs, and, you know, this employment market is probably the toughest employment market that I've seen, um, when you're battling for talent, um, in probably thirty years. Um, we all know that unemployment's down. Uh, we all know that wages are up, and, uh, it is, uh, a difficult process right now, but I think we're becoming, uh, you'll see the numbers that we're putting the effort in, and we are filling positions better than we have, we have. Yeah, so, yeah.
And we have, we have.
No, uh, you might be answering the question. Oh, sorry. So do you ever, um, have a position that sits vacant for a certain period of time? And because it has that vacant, find a way that it's filled in through some other existing personnel, and it just becomes eliminated?
Yes, we are, we're always evaluating those. So yes, we've we've pulled down positions that we can't hire for, we'll bring it back, either not fill it or redo, reclassify the position based on the needs of the department. So yes, we will find that.
Thank you. And I guess, so just, I'm I'm appreciating that I could analyze it later, but I don't have the, uh, the hard copy either. There is another hard copy available.
Yeah.
I'd like to get.
Thanks.
Okay, two things, uh, two things to keep on, all the labor costs on the fixed costs of the utility. So.
Say what?
August, what? Oh, this labor cost is is. Costs is not variable in future. There's huge turnovers and shifts there, but, you know, it's you know, we have to go as far as our ability to be able to pay for all the vacant position getting filled, okay? And every year, I just, we do have, we do attrition out certain amount of positions, and in any, in our cost of service. Uh, there's a certain amount of attrition built into that. Otherwise, it just puts more pressure on our rates and and, uh, but, you know, we're trying to slowly get there, okay? The other thing that I've asked all of the staff to look at is when you look down the road, keep in mind, where do we need to get to? And then how do, how are we filling those positions for our future needs? Not currently looking at, we've always done this, we've always been here with this, but where do we need to get to tomorrow? And then what, you know, how are we staffing for, you know, the next two to three years? And keep looking down the road for that, something like that. So you may see some adjustments in, uh, in what we're doing, you know, some of that has been throughout all of all of these years too, where we're, you know, kind of moving, again, production. Lost, sit down from there, we have to move people, and then we allow attrition to take place, your retirements, and then that number only works its way down. Some people take it, take advantage of bidding in the other jobs, and and we see some of that traffic too.
And we've, it relates back to the power plant. We have, we evaluate every one of those roles when somebody bids out, you know, do we really need that? So you've seen their numbers come down drastically, um, just through efficiencies and, you know, the attrition of our, uh, people from the, uh, Pendero Power Plant. You look at the next slide, it's, we we cover vacancies and personnel requisitions. So we go through, you know, how many average monthly separations we have. Um, requisitions that we typically have posted, so you can see, you know, the number of requisitions go have gone up pretty consistently the last three or four years. The average monthly requisitions filled, again, we're, um, filling those jobs when they, when they become available uh, pretty consistently. The average days to fill a position have gone down since twenty twenty. Uh, we all know what happened in twenty twenty. That was the, uh, the COVID pandemic, and prior to that, the employment market was much different, and you can tell in the number of days to fill a, a position. Um, the market completely changed in twenty twenty, and, um, it's still a very difficult one, uh, today, but we're getting better and better, as you can see. Average monthly new hires, again, increased to to three the last couple of years, and then our percentage of vacancies overall. So how many vacancies do we have compared to, uh, total positions? Uh, that's gone down from fifteen, sixteen percent down to thirteen today. So these numbers are all really good trends, especially when you consider, again, the difficult employment market and the difficulty you have filling skilled trade positions and professional positions. So those people are not as plentiful today as they have been in the past. Go to the next slide, um, is a historical review and overtime. And, you know, what you see, uh, here, other than an anomaly year in, uh, basically twenty twenty with COVID, um, the number has, uh, dollars of overtime have pretty been pretty consistent, right around four million dollars a year. Um, we project, uh, overtime this year to be about another four million dollars, uh, if that trend is per month continues. Um, and if that's, when when you look at wages increasing and overtime staying the same, that means there's less overtime hours consistently from one year to the next.
So there's also less employees.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
And as she asked earlier, this is for our contract employees. This is only, these are only ours. This doesn't take into account whatever they pay.
That's correct.
Capital.
Correct.
How many hourly people are there in accounting and finance? I assume.
Stores, so that's the majority of them. The store room, um, warehouse people. Um, so they're working when the operations guys are in.
So, yeah, during a storm, they're, they have to be.
Sure.
Yeah.
No, I, I, yeah.
So does the garage, so this other support, so does meter shops, you know, there's other people, the size lineman that work somebody storms.
Okay, um, next slide, slide nineteen is, um, employment trends. So you can see B P U with the six point four-four trend in, um, our turnover is a strong, it's a strong number. When you're seven, you know, six, seven percent overall, that's extremely strong, and only less than three percent of that in Humber is actual turnover where you have to terminate somebody or they leave of their own free will and not retiring. Those are, those are strong. Um, so that is, that is.
Less than double digits.
That's unbelievable.
Well, look at.
In this marketplace.
Right.
This marketplace has got to the point at my day job, it's, it's in the, uh, low to mid twenties.
Yeah.
And that's about normal for manufacturing, which the B P U is a manufacturer.
Right. And in today's market, yeah, you can go anywhere and make ten percent more money. You know, the question is, is it worth the change?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we've been pretty good at keeping our people here. Um, additionally, you know, that when it comes to new hires, our projected new hires this year, uh, if we continue the trend we have today, at about, we we project around forty-two, forty-three new hires, which is, again, it shows that we're filling those opportunities when we post them. We really struggle with, again, some, you know, positions like our lineman and and, you know, our professional uh, engineering positions and those kinds of things, I T roles, but, um, we are hiring people, so that's good, good news. Flip to the next page, retirement data. Um, we're projecting, projecting this year a twenty percent, uh, of our people are eligible, not projecting, it is twenty percent are eligible. We project about three point six-two percent are gonna retire. We know that number's solid because they have to give us a ninety-day notice. Um, and so we're, we know what those numbers are, um, through the end of the year, so that's.
Are the, is the numbers of retired in count against your overall turnover?
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the biggest part.
I can take, yeah, but we could take it down, and the actual turnover of non-retirement is two.
Yeah.
Yes.
Two to three percent.
Yeah, okay. And I think it's two point eight-two percent.
That's phenomenal.
Uh, page, uh, page twenty-one, uh, slide twenty-one, age and length of service statistics. Um, it's kind of, just kind of interesting to throw that these numbers out at you. The average age of full-time B P U employees is forty-seven. Uh, they average about thirteen years of service. Uh, twenty percent of our current employees, you saw that number, eligible for retirement. Um, fifty-seven is the average age of retirement, which last year was fifty-nine, so that number, uh, has gone down to fifty-seven. Um, and I think the COVID and just the economy had, people were holding off for a little bit. Those people left, and now, um, we've got a little bit more stability there, but we have a younger group of of people by a little bit. Um, and then, uh, you see what the retirement, uh, turnover rate is as well, so. Um, then this last, really, it's the last slide. If you go to the last slide, it's just simply some data that, um, I think the board had asked for, so we wanted to provide that, uh, just in this process. Um, and, you know, Lori had put that information together, and, um, you know, again, we have an over, over fifty percent burden rate, uh, when it comes to uh, labor and then our benefit burden. So, um, and that really concludes our presentation. Certainly willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Tier one and tier two, as people retire, the tier one is going down and.
Yeah, so right now, we have fifty-six percent of our workforce are tier-two employees. So last year, I think it was, was the first year that we had more than fifty percent of our workforce was tier-two. So that number's trending up for tier-two and down for tier-one.
Could probably answer this question, if I could reference back, you said twenty percent. Could probably answer this question if I could reference back, you said twenty percent. Um, of the workforce were eligible September, beginning of September. How does that reconcile with what's happening? I mean, not all twenty percent, we didn't lose twenty percent of the workforce. Have you staggered what? That actually has been or those that put in for that twenty percent?
Yeah, I mean, we, the, the good, good news is we get. We get ninety days notice to, to be able to fill any, any vacancy. Last year we had twenty two percent of our workforce that was eligible and we saw more go. Um, this year we have a little bit less eligible, a little bit less go. So we're seeing people, people are, the average age of retirement is fifty seven. So. People are waiting instead of going right at fifty five. Um, the last few years, they've waited a few more years before they go.
And then. That slide was up, I kept thinking about, I think it's actually that slide. Nope, that. Down, down one.
Send a eligible for retirement.
Well, well, that one, so. Kept thinking about uh. All the years previous to two seventeen. It seemed like we've always been somewhere between forty five. And fifty in terms of age of people working here. And the retirement age, uh, Lori, Jeremy. When did we go to fifty five? When did we shift to the tier one or fifty five?
Was in probably. Right after two thousand and five or so.
Yeah, so. Retirement age has been at fifty five for that long. So, you know, we, we've had reports from pension.
The other important thing was too, though. A lot of those folks, a lot of those folks during that timeframe. When they started, they couldn't put into the pension plan until they were thirty years old. So if you started. Twenty, you lost ten years. So that behavior was curbed a little bit. Now it's, it's different back down to. The day you start. You're contributing into the plan, no matter your age.
Yeah, but also. Back in those days too, you didn't have to. See people in the household working back as much as they. So people would stay in here a lot longer. Well, past retirement age, so. Depending on when they start their family. So and not all, not everybody started with families. Twenty years old. Okay, so. So there was, so my main point is that number haven't changed that much. People stay here. After retirement or get close to retirement, the average age has been pretty consistent. Far back as I can remember. This is nothing new. It's, it's gender. Where it's far back as I can remember.
Yeah, and that's talking about tier one. Tier two is a, a little bit different. Animal because it's, you know, you. You can't go until you're sixty with thirty years of service to have a full. Um, deal or at sixty five. Um, with more than five years of employment. So.
When was that episode in tier two?
In January of two thousand and ten. So thirteen years ago. Yep. So that's why you see now more than half is in tier two.
What did happen?
Yeah, fifty six percent.
But, you know. The stability of BPU, that's a place to work. Wages, benefits we're paying. Working here and take a chance on work, work a job and take them. Somewhere else. If we hire them, they tend to stay. The only ones that they leave is somebody chasing contract work. Maybe other, other contract jobs going on. And speaking of line, if we train them ourselves, they'll tend to stay here their whole career. If you hire them later, later in your career. Still have, have a desire to settle here, they're chasing dollars. We may hire them, fracture it down and it picks back up. Whenever you tell them, we'll say, I mean, just. Had a meeting where everybody came over and talked about what's going on over there. Certainly getting the data all the later days.
Yeah, there's, they're struggling to film as well. So. Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, come on.
Hold on now. Uh, so on. Page twenty three, slide twenty three. Um. So we, we add for the twenty twenty four. Budget.
I mean, I mean.
Yep.
I think it got pasted twice or whatever. I need, I'll, I'll owe you a twenty four slide. Because it's the same as twenty three is what I recognize.
Well, because I was like, we're at seventy four budget, or eighty six million now, surely it's gotta be more.
I think it's the same, uh, I pasted the same picture of twenty four, so I owe you a twenty four slide.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Well, mine would be on that, Lori. Rose doesn't, but mine would be on that is, uh, I can't see it significantly changing past the eighty six million. And at that, we're sitting around thirty eight percent labor burden for the overall. For the company. Versus budget, total budget.
I'm sorry, so.
I'm, I'm estimating a total annual budget of two hundred and fifty million, eighty six million is about thirty eight percent. So our labor burden, total labor burden is about. It's raising up close to forty percent of our total.
Our labor burn is around fifty four percent.
No, you're talking about labor versus.
Oh, the whole budget.
Over the whole.
Got it, got it, got it, got it.
We're just, we're just hovering just below forty right now. Okay. Hmm. But that does not include. Contract. Labor. So we'd have to, we'd have to look at those numbers. To see, yeah, I'm just looking at our internal labor is. Rising close to thirty eight percent of our total. I, I know it's a labor intensive. Industry is much more than like the one I'm from. But still. Uh, I would really like to understand what our total contract. Labor. Dollars are. So that I can understand how much to add to that eighty six million. To understand the total. Estimated. Labor burden. On the utility versus the annual budget. Yes.
The difference between a contract. Amount of. Subscribing to the. The part on. Contract work that may not be full time.
Labor.
Well, I, I know, but.
If you go out for a, a service, I mean, you go out for construction or whatever and they provide the labor. I don't see that as a contractor. I see that as a service, you know, as a construction contract. Because it's materials, it's labor, it's.
We're not bidding for individual hit counts.
Yeah.
To bid, we could say, okay.
No, but we have, we have teams that. You know, that we hire. Technically full time, like capital electric teams for line crews that. Have a certain number of dollars that we anticipate spending in a year. I understand, yeah, there's going to be ones that where it's wrapped into a. Price that is, it would be really hard to delineate and that's not what I'm so worried about. I'm worried more about understanding. And, and I'll even tell you how I'm, what I'm getting to is, is. I'll paint the, the long picture so it's easier. Maybe you'll understand my short term is that. During our rate hearing, we were talking about the discussion turned to the Nierman plant having ten, fifteen years of lifetime left on it. So. Looking down the road, ten to fifteen years from now. If we don't have a new generation built. Inside of our city, there's. Eighty people, eighty jobs. At that plant that will go away and. That's eighty employees or eighty households that are paying personal property tax and, and everything else to be. Citizens of our city that helps share the labor or the tax burden that we all. Feel. And how do we? Begin already thinking of how we can. Replace those. Dollar, those, those dollars into our city's funds. So, so if we're going to lose eighty people, say we shut down Nierman. In twenty thirty and we, we've decided that we're not going to build a new. Plant of any type of energy production within the boundaries of Wyandotte County. So. There's eighty positions that are going to go away that are citizens of our, so. I want to understand how much we're paying right now for those labor costs that could be done by BPU employees. I know it's going to be a different labor burden because. Benefits and everything, but I just, I just want to understand. The magnitude of, of how many dollars could be shifted to employees. And then we would, and then we would see that as. Replacing the employees that, you know, will no longer have a job because the plant is not running anymore. You know what I'm saying? So if we have five hundred people that are inside of our city working and we shut down a plant that has eighty people, instead of having just four twenty. How can we replace those with other jobs that right now are being done by contractors that could be done by? Internal employees and keep that. Keep that level of. Benefits staying within our county because those people are. Employees of the county and they're in, inside of the city. So, you know, now you see what I mean? So that's what I'm just trying to understand is, is those kind of contract work that, you know, that we're, that we're doing full time work because. For whatever reason, either we can't. Get enough people, we don't have dreammen to train the, you know, the, the. Applicants, you know, I mean, there's, there's a host of reasons why you can't just immediately load up people. But I just want to understand what that burden is. Does that help?
Yeah, okay. Somewhat long answer to that question will be. We uh. I mean, we're, we're, so we're doing our generation assessment and our RRP study now. Okay, so that's already.
Yeah, that'll be downstream.
We'll make some determinations of where we go on the generation side. You know, and then we need to figure that out because. Uh, it's going to be important to, to the future of this community and for our utility for us to get those, make those decisions correctly, right? In terms of uh. In terms of future staffing. If that was the shutdown, you know, just like Nierman, we will. Just like call before that, we will have to put a plan together to determine what do we do with that staff. And I would be concerned too with eighty employees. Being totally removed from this utility, from this community and paying taxes. Here too. So that'd be part of that evaluation on. How do we get from? November twenty twenty three to some future date and then how do we make sure that we plan our way towards what's that?
I understand, but in the meantime, I, I would like to see how much we're spending on the contract for that kind of labor.
I know, I know. The other thing, the other thing that we have to be careful for, we're not there yet. There's some utilities in Kansas that's already here. I don't know what Topeka may do down the road in terms, you know, with some of the studies and, and. It's come out just two years ago and evaluating all the utility costs. Because there. Decision they've taken is. Energy prices in the state of Kansas is higher than, than the neighboring states. So we were brought into a study. And. What I'm concerned about is just shifting costs around is. If the state decides to take a position that everybody's going to have to unbundle their rates and start doing. Transmission services, distribution services and stuff like this, we can't load up those other areas. And pass those costs off to our, to our community. Because our, our. Distribution cost is so high because we've taken all these productive people and put it there. Okay, and now, and now that becomes. One of the highest. Prices that shows up on our bill compared to every other utility. Okay, so. All of that have to be done, you know, with careful consideration as to. How do we manage our future work? How do we, how do we manage our staffing and, and? How do we transfer our costs around? We're not there yet. Uh, I wouldn't be surprised if energy prices go up.
Yeah.
Further in the future, that there's going to be more regulation and pressures for us to do something different. Okay?
Yeah.
But there are municipal utilities in Kansas that are already on bundle rates, okay? And they, and those utilities are smaller. IRP, every G, unbundle their rate for the, the services that, that they provide to the municipal utilities in Kansas. Okay, and they see that. So. I would just be careful with. You know, how far we go and how far do we shift costs from production to, to distribution to transmission? Because that may come back and haunt.
I know, but for right now, I just want to know where we're at.
Okay, okay.
So that, if I have the baseline, then I'm better able to understand. Where the possibility of movement is and what that impact be.
Right.
You know.
So earlier I said, you know, thing I'm asking staff to do is to look down the road. And how do we need to build staff and where, where do we need to fill our positions for? Into the future and, and we need to continue to focus on that. So that'll hopefully help, help with that.
Yeah, I would imagine that'll be in the IRP and, and everything. We'll be looking at the future generation and, and what the company's going to look like in the future. Like I said, I, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of. How much our labor dollars are because if we have contract teams that are working regularly. They're, they're labor dollars, you know, it's just, it's just in a different bucket. I just want to see those buckets so I can. Understand the total, the total labor burden to run the utility.
Okay, and, and feel comfortable, we're looking at that as well, okay?
Okay, I know. I'd just like to see it. Thank you. That was my last question.
Thank you. Any other word member?
Good.
Thank you very much for your presentation to the HR and. Accounting finance departments for all things.
We appreciate your attention. Did he dance?
I have a motion to adjourn, please.
This Jeff moved.
Oh, my second.
Motion to adjourn been moved in second and roll call please.
Roll call, Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Broneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
That motion carries. The work session is adjourned.
Thank you.